Good evening and welcome to the North Pocono School District Board of Education November Regular Meeting. We ask all those who are able to please join us in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Russia, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Jennings, if I may, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in honor of all of our veterans and their courageous service to our nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. Mr. Far, may we have roll call?
Mr. Bracy?
Here.
Ms. Fota?
Here.
Dr. Hurd?
Here.
Mr. Jennings?
Present.
Mrs. Maros?
Here.
Mrs. McLean?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Here.
Mrs. Walsh?
Present.
Mr. Wolf? Mr. Barker? Mr. DiCipio?
Here.
Mr. Cephus?
Here.
All student representatives present, eight board members present.
Thank you, Mr. Far. Mr. Powell, may we have our mission statement?
The mission of North Pocono School District is to educate and challenge all students to their maximum potential and prepare them for the demands of a global society.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Up next will be president's announcements. An executive session for personnel reasons was held this evening, Wednesday, November 5th, 2025, at 6:00 PM here in the high school library. Our work session was held on Monday, November 3rd, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the intermediate school library. An executive session for personnel reasons was held Monday, November 3rd, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the intermediate school library. And an executive session for personnel reasons was held on Wednesday, October 16th, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the intermediate school library. Discussion of proposed action on business before the board. Are there any agenda revisions?
Yes, Mr. Jennings. In motion D5, we need to make a correction to a middle school student observer. Grace Maris DeJesus is from the University of Scranton. She will be placed with Jennifer Dundee from dates October 1st through December 1st. It was just a typo with the teacher and the dates, and we will correctly record that properly in the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. Any other agenda revisions?
None.
Moving on to correspondence?
I have none.
Thank you. Dr. Powell, informational reports. Mr. Slode, may we have student recognition, please?
Our first student tonight is Elizabeth Clark. Elizabeth is the daughter of Patrick and Jennifer Clark, college board AP scholar with distinction. Betty will have completed 10 AP classes by the time she graduates and is currently taking AP Biology, AP History, AP Literary and Composition, AP Psychology, and AP Counting and Math. Betty has consistently maintained high honors throughout her preschool years and is a member of the National Honors Society. She has participated in the school soccer team for six years and was the captain this year. Betty has also been a member of the track and field teams for five years. She is a main song, the Dead Language Society, reading celebration, prom committee, Tavita, art club, and career club, in which she serves as an officer. She is particularly involved in the Dead Language Society, where she has earned five gold medals in the National Latin exam. A gold medal in the National Anthemology exam and several Medusas Ethology awards. Outside of school, Betty works as a lifeguard and swims to our big basketball community association. She has also been president and volunteer in the areas of Catholic community in both the St. Catherine's and St. Eulogies churches, as well as St. Joseph's, Melkite, and Scream. After graduation, Betty plans on attending college to study science and wants to enter the healthcare field. Elizabeth Betty Clark.
I would like to thank my parents for being a part of this. I am a member of the school board and I am a student.
Kelly Mann is the daughter of Karen and John Mann and sister of Connor Mann. Upon graduation, she will complete five advanced placement courses and several Golden Roman courses over two years ago at Pocono High School. Kelly has maintained high honors in each sport and is a member of the National Honors Society. Kelly is a two-year defender-
For the varsity lacrosse team. She is currently involved in yearbook club, finance club, reg cross club, and several others. She has taken on treasurer and secretary roles. Kelly has worked with the student council as a representative for two years. Outside of school, Kelly attends weekly classes at the Carmo Ardito School of Dance. Over the past 11 years, she has studied tap, jazz, lyrical, and ballet. She works for the Tasty Swirl in the summer. She is a member of the Moscow Borough Young Visionaries Committee, where she collaborates on local event and improvement ideas. At Moscow's National Night Out in 2025, she was presented the Citizen of the Year Award. Kelly frequently volunteers with the North Pocono Cultural Society for the annual gala and Moscow Street Fair. She also volunteers with Friends of the Poor in Scranton and the St. Catherine of Siena Parish for Vacation Bible School. After graduation, Kelly plans to attend a four-year university and major in mathematics. Kelly Mann.
Thank you, school board, Mr. Slode and my family. Thank you.
Dr. Powell, Board of Education, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Slode. Gentlemen, may we have our student reports?
Lee, at the Career Technology Center, we had our back-to-school night on October 16th, and the culinary program had its annual cupcake baking contest on October 30th.
Today, members of the student council attended the NEIU Next Level Leaders Competition. This gave students the opportunity to practice and apply soft skills in real-life business scenarios throughout Huntsville. Additionally, student council has a trip tomorrow to the Pennsylvania Student Council Conference, which will be hosted in Pittsburgh. Six students are going on behalf of North Pocono, where they will hone and sharpen their leadership skills on a statewide level. Additionally, we are in the final stages of preparation and planning for a can drive to take place on the 17th through the 21st. This will benefit the North Pocono Food Pantry, along with plans to help the Wayne County Food Bank as we also serve that county.
For the senior class, the seniors recently celebrated Halloween during school, where they could dress up in their costumes and compete for the best costume in different categories. The winners were chosen during lunch and were awarded with a $10 Dunkin' Donuts gift card. Also, the senior class student council is currently fundraising money for the class by selling Power Card tickets for Dave and Buster's. And there will be a Dave and Buster's night in late November where family and friends can attend.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Superintendent Report?
Yes, Mr. Jennings. It is my distinct honor to take a look back as we come to a close in our fall sports season, although we're not quite done yet. But to really take some time and acknowledge some wonderful performances, both at our team and our individual level. So, all of our teams in the fall were able to qualify for district playoffs, with our girls volleyball team and our girls soccer team taking a tough loss in the quarterfinals. Our boys soccer team fighting into the semifinal round. And then, we also have some individuals to be recognized tonight. On our girls tennis team, Anna Clementoni and Cam Fraschoni took third-place medals in the district competition. Over this past weekend, we just had a freshman in Evy Reinhardt finish in 59th out of 249 racers on a 3.1-mile course in her first adventure to the state competition. And junior Sarah O'Donnell in her third attempt down at states, finishing in 85th position out of 249 runners. Excellent job by those ladies in a very difficult race and competition. And we're also very fortunate to have, from our girls golf team, a seventh-place medalist in senior Lila Jones after two very impressive rounds of 76 and 74 on a very difficult Penn State golf course. So, I'd like to offer congratulations to all of those athletes for representing not only our school district, but their family and the community in the best way possible. Obviously, our fall season is not over yet. Our football team is hosting a district championship game this Friday night. Please make sure that you visit our website to make sure that you can buy the online tickets, because there will be no tickets at the gate. So, if you were to go to our website or enter our social media platforms, that information is there. We are hoping to have a great showing. Hopefully, after this wind comes through this evening, it'll knock that rain out of the forecast for Friday, and we will bring home a district championship for the first time in quite a while. Just wanted to acknowledge those student athletes, and believe me, here at North Pocono, the student comes first. And these wonderful athletes are excellent students as well, so we appreciate their effort and all of their endeavors.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. Mr. Far, may we have roll call?
Mr. Bracy?
Here.
Ms. Fota?
Here.
Dr. Hurd?
Here.
Mr. Jennings?
Present.
Mrs. Maros?
Here.
Mrs. McLean?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Here.
Mrs. Walsh?
Present.
Mr. Wolf? Mr. Barker? Mr. DiCipio?
Here.
Mr. Cephus?
Here.
All student representatives present, eight board members present.
Thank you, Mr. Far. Mr. Powell, may we have our mission statement?
The mission of North Pocono School District is to educate and challenge all students to their maximum potential and prepare them for the demands of a global society.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Up next will be president's announcements. An executive session for personnel reasons was held this evening, Wednesday, November 5th, 2025, at 6:00 PM here in the high school library. Our work session was held on Monday, November 3rd, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the intermediate school library. An executive session for personnel reasons was held Monday, November 3rd, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the intermediate school library. An executive session for personnel reasons was held on Tuesday, October 28th, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the intermediate school library. And an executive session for personnel reasons was held on Wednesday, October 16th, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the intermediate school library. Discussion of proposed action on business before the board. Are there any agenda revisions?
Yes, Mr. Jennings. In motion D5, we need to make a correction to a middle school student observer. Grace Maris DeJesus is from the University of Scranton. She will be placed with Jennifer Dundee from dates October 1st through December 1st. It was just a typo with the teacher and the dates, and we will correctly record that properly in the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. Any other agenda revisions?
None.
Moving on to correspondence?
I have none.
Thank you. Dr. Powell, informational reports. Mr. Slode, may we have student recognition, please?
Our first student tonight is Elizabeth Clark. Elizabeth is the daughter of Patrick and Jennifer Clark, college board AP scholar with distinction. Betty will have completed 10 AP classes by the time she graduates and is currently taking AP Biology, AP History, AP Literary and Composition, AP Psychology, and AP Counting and Math. Betty has consistently maintained high honors throughout her preschool years and is a member of the National Honors Society. She has participated in the school soccer team for six years and was the captain this year. Betty has also been a member of the track and field teams for five years. She is a main song, the Dead Language Society, reading celebration, prom committee, Tavita, art club, and career club, in which she serves as an officer. She is particularly involved in the Dead Language Society, where she has earned five gold medals in the National Latin exam. A gold medal in the National Anthemology exam and several Medusas Ethology awards. Outside of school, Betty works as a lifeguard and swims to our big basketball community association. She has also been president and volunteer in the areas of Catholic community in both the St. Catherine's and St. Eulogies churches, as well as St. Joseph's, Melkite, and Scream. After graduation, Betty plans on attending college to study science and wants to enter the healthcare field. Elizabeth Betty Clark.
I would like to thank my parents for being a part of this. I am a member of the school board and I am a student. Kelly is the daughter of Karen and John Mann and sister of Connor Mann. Upon graduation, she will complete five advanced placement courses and several Golden Roman courses over two years ago at Pocono High School. Kelly has maintained high honors in each sport and is a member of the National Honors Society. Kelly is a two-year defender-
For the varsity lacrosse team. She is currently involved in yearbook club, finance club, reg cross club, and several others. She has taken on treasurer and secretary roles. Kelly has worked with the student council as a representative for two years. Outside of school, Kelly attends weekly classes at the Carmo Ardito School of Dance. Over the past 11 years, she has studied tap, jazz, lyrical, and ballet. She works for the Tasty Swirl in the summer. She is a member of the Moscow Borough Young Visionaries Committee, where she collaborates on local event and improvement ideas. At Moscow's National Night Out in 2025, she was presented the Citizen of the Year Award. Kelly frequently volunteers with the North Pocono Cultural Society for the annual gala and Moscow Street Fair. She also volunteers with Friends of the Poor in Scranton and the St. Catherine of Siena Parish for Vacation Bible School. After graduation, Kelly plans to attend a four-year university and major in mathematics. Kelly Mann.
I would just like to say thank you to the school board, my teachers, Mr. Slode, and my family. Thank you.
Haley Rocco, daughter of Nick and Adeline Rocco. She will have completed eight AP classes by graduation and currently taking AP Physics, AP Chemistry, AP Psychology, and AP Pre-Calculus for her senior year. Haley has had high honors all throughout high school and is a member of the National Honors Society, member of the rifle and track team. Haley participated in student council all four years of high school and was Lackawanna representative for the Pennsylvania Association of Student Councils her sophomore and junior year. Haley volunteers at Geisinger CMC as a junior volunteer and program mentor. She also facilitates a Catholic youth conference each year, International Student Leadership Institute. Haley shadowed a primary care physician and physical therapist this summer. Haley currently works as a food service worker at the Geisinger Community Medical Center. Upon graduation, she hopes to continue her education at the University of Scranton, where she will major in neuroscience on the pre-med track. Haley Rocco.
Thank you, school board, Mr. Slode and Mr. Collins. This is such an honor. I know that most of these speeches are a little short, but I wanted to extend my gratitude for the school district, because it has helped me so much over the last 12 years, and especially over the last four. When I was in elementary school, I struggled in reading and math. I remember failing almost every cold read I took, and I was in special reading and math classes. When I entered high school, I was in mostly academic classes, but thanks to the help of my teachers and their perseverance in helping me, I was able to challenge myself, and I now take AP and advanced classes that freshman year me could not even spell. I think what makes the school district so special is how passionate the teachers are about the material and the careers they're in. In the past few years, my teachers have become more role models and friends than teachers. These attributes make a teacher so easy to learn from. I would also like to thank my parents for getting me here, for teaching me the importance of academics, and for just encouraging me in times where I needed it. I'd also like to thank the school board for all your hard work and for encouraging us. Thank you for this opportunity and honor.
Dr. Powell, Board of Education, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Slode. Gentlemen, may we have our student reports?
Lee, at the Career Technology Center, we had our back-to-school night on October 16th, and the culinary program had its annual cupcake baking contest on October 30th.
Today, members of the student council attended the NEIU Next Level Leaders Competition. This gave students the opportunity to practice and apply soft skills in real-life business scenarios throughout Huntsville. Additionally, student council has a trip tomorrow to the Pennsylvania Student Council Conference, which will be hosted in Pittsburgh. Six students are going on behalf of North Pocono, where they will hone and sharpen their leadership skills on a statewide level. Additionally, we are in the final stages of preparation and planning for a can drive to take place on the 17th through the 21st. This will benefit the North Pocono Food Pantry, along with plans to help the Wayne County Food Bank as we also serve that county.
For the senior class, the seniors recently celebrated Halloween during school, where they could dress up in their costumes and compete for the best costume in different categories. The winners were chosen during lunch and were awarded with a $10 Dunkin' Donuts gift card. Also, the senior class student council is currently fundraising money for the class by selling Power Card tickets for Dave and Buster's. And there will be a Dave and Buster's night in late November where family and friends can attend.
Ladies and gentlemen, gentlemen, thank you. Superintendent Report?
Yes, Mr. Jennings. It is my distinct honor to take a look back as we come to a close in our fall sports season, although we're not quite done yet. But to really take some time and acknowledge some wonderful performances, both at our team and our individual level. So, all of our teams in the fall were able to qualify for district playoffs, with our girls volleyball team and our girls soccer team taking a tough loss in the quarterfinals. Our boys soccer team fighting into the semifinal round. And then, we also have some individuals to be recognized tonight. On our girls tennis team, Anna Clementoni and Cam Fraschoni took third-place medals in the district competition. Over this past weekend, we just had a freshman in Evy Reinhardt finish in 59th out of 249 racers on a 3.1-mile course in her first adventure to the state competition. And junior Sarah O'Donnell in her third attempt down at states, finishing in 85th position out of 249 runners. Excellent job by those ladies in a very difficult race and competition. And we're also very fortunate to have, from our girls golf team, a seventh-place medalist in senior Lila Jones after two very impressive rounds of 76 and 74 on a very difficult Penn State golf course. So, I'd like to offer congratulations to all of those athletes for representing not only our school district, but their family and the community in the best way possible. Obviously, our fall season is not over yet. Our football team is hosting a district championship game this Friday night. Please make sure that you visit our website to make sure that you can buy the online tickets, because there will be no tickets at the gate. So, if you were to go to our website or enter our social media platforms, that information is there. We are hoping to have a great showing. Hopefully, after this wind comes through this evening, it'll knock that rain out of the forecast for Friday, and we will bring home a district championship for the first time in quite a while. Just wanted to acknowledge those student athletes, and believe me, here at North Pocono, the student comes first. And these wonderful athletes are excellent students as well, so we appreciate their effort and all of their endeavors.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. Are there any directors' reports? Hearing none, we'll move on to public participation. Act 93 of 1998 provides the opportunity for district residents and taxpayers to make public comments to the board. The act also permits the board to adopt reasonable rules to regulate public participation in the board meeting. Any member of the public who has comments for this board was asked to submit their comments by 5:30 PM. Any member attending in person that has comments for the board is asked to comply with the following rules. Your comments be limited to five minutes. At four minutes and 30 seconds, a warning bell will be issued. You direct your comments to the board president only. You practice reasonable decorum in your comments and let you begin by stating your name, address, and group affiliation, if any. Mr. Far, any online comments?
No online comments. We do have one signature here in the public participation sheet. First is Jahan Tabatabay. Want to come to the microphone?
Okay. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to-
So, all of our teams in the fall were able to qualify for district playoffs, with our girls volleyball team and our girls soccer team taking a tough loss in the quarterfinals, our boys soccer team fighting into the semifinal round. And then, we also have some individuals to be recognized tonight. On our girls tennis team, Anna Clementoni and Cam Fraschoni took third-place medals in the district competition. Over this past weekend, we just had a freshman in Evy Reinhardt finish in 59th out of 249 racers on a 3.1-mile course in her first adventure to the state competition, and junior Sarah O'Donnell in her third attempt down at states, finishing in 85th position out of 249 runners. Excellent job by those ladies in a very difficult race and competition. And we're also very fortunate to have, from our girls golf team, a seventh-place medalist in senior Lila Jones after two very impressive rounds of 76 and 74 on a very difficult Penn State golf course. So, I'd like to offer congratulations to all of those athletes for representing not only our school district, but their family and the community in the best way possible. Obviously, our fall season is not over yet. Our football team is hosting a district championship game this Friday night. Please make sure that you visit our website to make sure that you can buy the online tickets, because there will be no tickets at the gate. So, if you were to go to our website or enter our social media platforms, that information is there. We are hoping to have a great showing. Hopefully, after this wind comes through this evening, it'll knock that rain out of the forecast for Friday, and we will bring home a district championship for the first time in quite a while. Just wanted to acknowledge those student athletes, and believe me, here at North Pocono, the student comes first, and these wonderful athletes are excellent students as well. So, we appreciate their effort and all of their endeavors.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. Are there any directors' reports? Hearing none, we'll move on to public participation. Act 93 of 1998 provides the opportunity for district residents and taxpayers to make public comments to the board. The act also permits the board to adopt reasonable rules to regulate public participation in the board meeting. Any member of the public who has comments for this board was asked to submit their comments by 5:30 PM. Any member attending in person that has comments for the board is asked to comply with the following rules. Your comments be limited to five minutes. At 4:30, a warning bell will be issued. You direct your comments to the board president only. You practice reasonable decorum in your comments, and let you begin by stating your name, address, and group affiliation, if any. Mr. Farah, any online comments?
No online comments. We do have one signature here in the public participation sheet. First is Jahan Tabatabay. Want to come to the microphone?
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak here this evening. My name is Jahan Tabatabay. I'm at 302 Autumn Drive, Moscow. I'm here on behalf of the adults that play sports, that enjoyed, that is, playing sports, up until we found out that community education was taken away, was not funded. So, I'm coming for you to plead my case, and not only my case, but on behalf of my fellow adults, mostly dads, that come for adult basketball. I had attended the adult volleyball, so I know that there are a sizable amount of people who play volleyball as well. I think altogether, speaking for the basketball crew, there's probably a good 15 to 20 of us, and then with the volleyball crew, I think there's probably another 15 or 20. So, I would say there's 40 of us that really are wondering why these programs were cut and what can be done to restore them. Certainly, we understand that activities should be first and foremost for the students, but let me ask you, at 9 o'clock at night, who's using Moscow Elementary Center's gymnasium? And I could tell you from years past, nobody. And if there is an elementary-age student, or an NPI student, or middle, you know, school student that's using the gym at that hour, something's wrong. They probably shouldn't be. High school is great, you know? High school, we're teenagers, we stay up all night anyway, or when we were teenagers. You know, we would stay up all night anyway. That's understood, but I don't think an elementary-age child should be up at 9 o'clock at night, engaged in some sort of a practice, nor a student of NPI's age either. So, again, I'm asking, hoping, that the board can restore funding for the community education director and/or simply allow us as the adults to self-regulate, which we did anyway. When we played basketball, it was just us and the janitor. So, we're really hoping that this can be restored, and if there's anything that I can do or my colleagues can do in our capacity to help that happen, I would be more than happy to speak with whomever. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak at this time?
Mark E. Falk, Springbrook Township. First, I would like to congratulate Mara, Pia, Mark, and Elizabeth on being retained in yesterday's election. Your service to your community does not go unnoticed by most. My other concern is, a quick question, how many people are online watching tonight?
Mr. DeWolf? Seventeen people are currently online, Mr. E. Falk.
Seventeen, okay. My other concern is, when board members are not in attendance, I do not believe that they should be calling in on the phone and voting on anything pertaining to the district. It's a well-known fact that the public has a right to address their government to their face. So, if somebody's here and had a question, they're not here to be addressed and asked. And it's nothing against Mrs. Fota, but last week, last month, they had to call out her name several times because we weren't hearing her vote. And I, for one, never heard one response from her, none. And they had to ask out Mrs. Fota, Mrs. Fota, and then apparently she responded. Nobody here knows what she said. The only thing we know is what you said she said. So, I'm asking this board to have the courage to stop yourselves from being able to call in when you can't be here. It's understandable. Everybody's life revolves around a lot of working parts, and not everybody can be here. I, for one, completely understand that. But if you cannot be here, I don't believe you have the right to make a decision on what's happening if you cannot be at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. E. Falk.
Is there anyone else in the audience? Hearing none. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Farah. We'll move on to action on business before the board. I have a motion to approve the agenda of action on business before the board. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Walsh.
On the question? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Motion passes 8-0.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on October 8th, 2025, as attachment A on your agenda. Is there a second? I'll second.
Second by Mr. Powell.
On the question? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Motion passes 8-0.
I have a motion to approve the following expulsion agreements as listed below. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Hurd.
On the question? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Motion passes 8-0.
Personnel, Mrs. Marrows?
I have a motion to accept with regret the following resignations as listed below. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Fota.
On the question?
Yes, I would just like to thank Mrs. Biajoli and Ms. Angrotti for their service to the district and wish them the best in their future endeavors.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes 8-0.
I have a motion to accept with regret the following retirement resignation as listed below. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. McLean.
On the question?
Yes, once again, I would just like to thank Mrs. Lentowski for her dedicated service to the North Pocono School District. All of her years obviously spent in the nurse's office, which at times, as most of us know, is not an easy place to exist, but we do thank her for her dedicated service and wish her well on her retirement.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes 8-0.
I have a motion to approve the following appointments as listed below. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Walsh.
On the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes 8-0.
I have a motion to approve the following extracurricular, co-curricular appointments as listed below. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Hurd.
On the question?
Just like to acknowledge that we now have an Avidem Club advisor, and we'll be moving that group forward with future endeavors here at the high school, and we're really excited about that. Obviously, the other appointments are for our Science Olympiad competition season that will be coming up, and we're getting our spring extracurricular appointments in place because, believe it or not, we already have teams that are conditioning for an upcoming season, and we're very excited about that as well.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes 8-0.
I have a motion to approve the following student placements as listed below. Do I have a second? Second?
Second by Mrs. McLean.
On the question?
Yes, just to note, we will adjust the University of Scranton Middle School Student Observer in the minutes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes 8-0.
Thank you, Mrs. Marrows. Mr. Bracy, may we have transportation?
I have a motion to approve the following drivers as listed below. All paperwork is on file. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Marrows.
On the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes 8-0.
Thank you, Mr. Bracy. Mrs. McLean, may we have finance, please?
Thank you. I have a motion to approve closing the environmental club account within the high school activity account. The remaining balance of $127.29 will be transferred to the high school principal's account. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Hurd.
On the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes 8-0.
I have a motion to approve an agreement with Government Software Services, Inc., to print the Homestead/Farmstead notices. Please see attachment C. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Jennings.
On the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes 8-0.
I have a motion to approve the following financial reports as listed below. Please see attachment D. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Fota.
On the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes 8-0.
I have a motion to approve payment of the general fund bills. Please see attachment E. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Jennings.
On the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes 8-0.
I have a motion to approve payment of the capital project fund disbursements. Please see attachment F. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Marrows.
On the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passes 8-0.
Thank you, Mrs. McLean. Old business?
Mr. DeWolf, how many online viewers currently? Fifteen. Thank you very much.
New business? The work session of the North Pocono Board of Education will be held Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the intermediate school library. The reorganization meeting of the North Pocono Board of Education will be held Thursday, December 4th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the North Pocono High School auditorium, and the regular meeting will immediately follow the reorganization meeting. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? I'll second.
Second by Mr. Powell.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.